Good morning. We'll officially call this meeting to order. And I believe the only permitted place is here this morning. So we'll move to item number two on the agenda, public comment.
Excuse me. I'd like to move to amend the agenda prior to doing that.
All right, sir.
Okay, I would move that we remove the language from number four on the agenda, from discussion and possible action on solid waste program, to simply discussion. And I know that according to our rules of procedure, that that needs the agreement of the two commissioners who called this special meeting. So I believe that's Commissioner Butler and Commissioner Freer.
First of all, Madam Clerk, is the agenda available to modify?
You can't add, but if you don't want to discuss something, you can. You can't add to it, but if you want to. This circumstance, yes, if you want to do that. But if you do that, you won't be able to give any direction to us either, the action, if you take action away.
Right.
You guys can't approve anything, any ordinance today, because I don't have any for you, but you could take actions such as giving us direction.
Yeah, and I think that's the intent, and that was the intent of making that available. It's not just to vote on things, it's to any action. And as she just said, you know, action to instruct the town staff to update the ordinance, for example, so.
No, well, let me just say that I sent you an email when this agenda came out, stating my concern about having a meeting where we were going to make a decision on this when we would have clearly less people than we have at a normal meeting. And you tell me, there was no problem if we didn't discuss it at all, and if we put it over to the 19th. And I'm not saying not to discuss it. What I'm asking is that we don't make any vote, and we can discuss it again on the 19th and vote on the 19th. And it's clearly contradictory to what you sent me, to what you just said.
Let me respond. It's not, because we're not, I have no intention on, I don't, I don't know about the board of voting on the 19th. But I would like to update to everybody, so everyone could have a clear view of what the new, what the updated ordinance is, not just a lot of discussion.
Peter, if I may, updated, you mean, the current updated ordinance as is? Or, because again, I kind of follow, I follow what Mike is saying. And you also said that we were going to be discussing. And if we're discussing and laying out all of the points that are open for possible change, and getting to that stage to have for, to, for February 19th, I think it is, to me, that should be fully adequate, because then that can go in the packet, and we can get the feedback before we again do anything on a document that may then just have to change again. So if we discuss and it is fully captured in the minutes, all of the points that are open for discussion, and the thoughts of the commissioners to put in the packet for the 19th that the public can then comment on, that should give us the direction of where the ordinance needs to be tweaked, rather than going forward, doing something with a tweak and another proposed that may then not be what the public wants. So I think the, asking the staff to do anything to amend the ordinance, which also means getting the town attorney to check whether it's appropriate, I don't know that it's necessary before the 19th. But laying out all of the concerns in a clear way, so people can see what is open for possible change, I think is appropriate.
And then, and then we'll have to go through this process again, asking the staff to update the ordinance, having the attorney looking at it, make sure what we're asking for is...
We won't be having them do anything on the ordinance until after the meeting on the 19th, is what I'm saying. We can capture what the concerns and areas that might be amended are without asking for a rewrite of the ordinance, to get the public opinion of what it is they really do want to see and why, and then amend the ordinance. I'm going to remind you, we have three more months.
Yeah, so you're...
I'm just trying to avoid a, another draft ordinance that then is probably going to get changed on the 19th from public opinion.
Yeah, there's a whole possibility of that. My, my preference would be for the public to see it in, as the staff interpret it, interprets it, and updating in the ordinance, in the ordinance, rather than notes, or buried in, in the, in today's conversation. So it's, it's just how they see it, it's just how they see it. Because I, I agree, we should get feedback on the 19th, make any changes that we want, and then on the next March meeting would be a vote. That's the way I see it.
Let me just go back to what I said a few minutes ago. When I sent the note out, this was your response to me, which seems to be in total opposite of what your, the position you're taking now. I was under the impression that Pat wanted trash ordinance on the agenda ASAP, and that's why we added it to the special meeting. We can discuss at the special meeting or not, and carry over to February 19th meeting and vote then. The other calendar-related item for me is the need to know how much the whole island rollback will cost.
So, like I said, I'm not asking, I have no, I didn't ever intend to have a vote here, but my intention is to make it available for the public and us in a, in a draft ordinance view that is closest to what we're actually going to pass, for the, for the public to see on the 19th. So it's no vote, and I think that's what I, what I said, so it's not inconsistent.
Yeah, I mean, I'll sit here quietly for a minute, but then I have to talk. The, my, and I don't want to get into the subject of the, of trash right now, the solid waste pro, program and that, but I have provided with the commissioners with a copy of my next statement, as I read statement in the last commissioners' meeting. And I have some, I've outlined in there exactly what, based on the 30,000 emails that I've received from, from 80-plus percent of the homeowners on Holden Beach. And I'm not going to discuss those, I'm not going to discuss those now. I'm not going to discuss those now. However, the commissioners do have this information, and the public does not. But when we get to that subject, I will read the comments that I have. And my intent today is not to vote, but my intent today is to have a clear understanding of exactly the input and consideration to, to, for the ordinance to be updated, to reflect accordingly. Thank you.
So I'll make a, a motion to amend the agenda to remove the language.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no.
No.
It's three to two, Madam Clerk. Agenda stays as presented. Number two on the re-approved agenda, public comment. Anyone in the public wanting to make a comment? Yes, sir, if you will come to the podium and give us your name.
I'm not familiar with the procedure, how this goes, it seems like...
You're doing, you're doing great. Just give us your name and say what's on your mind.
You guys seem a little dysfunctional, first of all. I mean, you guys aren't on the same page. The, I'm resident, I don't, if...
Excuse, we have to have your name for the clerk to put in the record.
My name is Rich Massey, I'm resident 606 Ocean Boulevard West. Is there a part of the meeting where you talk, where the public talks about the trash ordinance? Is that now? Okay, so I don't know where it stands, if it's been approved, if it's not been approved. It sounds like it hasn't been approved. It sounds like there's 30,000 emails out there, which you're going to read, which doesn't seem possible. But it seems like a bad idea. It's, I'm a part-time resident, I'm not here that often, I don't rent my house. It, the way I understand it is if there's a trash can that's out there on a day I'm not here, it's a $50 fine, and there's a fine every day after that. That's my understanding of it. If that happens, I'm going to comply with the regulations, but it means that my trash is going to be sitting around for a month, month and a half at times, and that's probably 20, 30 percent of the island that that's going to happen with. And, you know, animals are going to get it, they're going to spread trash all around. It's going to be, it's not going to be a good scene, it's going to stink. For the people that do rent, they, you know, their tenants aren't going to, they're just going to build that fee into the rental contracts. So it's, it's going to be, that's not good for business, right? I mean, it just, and then for the people that are here all the time, you're going to have to deal with the trash that's spread around by the, by the animals. So it just seems like a bad idea. I don't know whose idea it was, but it just seems like a bad idea. It seems like, you know, I get that people don't like the trash out there, and they, a few people, maybe some people are upset, but the, you know, the few people that complain, there's 98 percent of the rest of the island that thinks things are just fine. So I don't even know why we're having the conversation.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak this morning? All right, we'll move to number three. Objectives, town management. Is that you, Mr. Hewitt?
I think so. As a leadoff batter here, I've provided the commissioners a, my stab at assembling a proposed budget season schedule, based on my understanding of our statutory requirements, commissioners' availability, what y'all desire to see in terms of board workshops. Some of these, especially down to the end, are probably spitballed a little loose. But specifically, I wanted to propose what in essence is a series of five commissioner workshops, basically where we will provide commissioners with both revenues and expense spreadsheets, and we can dialogue from alpha to omega with the end product, of course, resulting in basically a secretarial rendition, budget message of what the, a proposed budget ordinance will be. So those, those five workshops are basically a week apart, with the exception of the March 28th and 12th, April workshop. And I've proposed this same time, 10 o'clock in the morning, for, for those workshops. The budget message, I've bubble projected sometime during the week of the 6th to the 10th, not knowing exactly how, how we will work out. But my intent is to provide that budget message early in May. The, the public hearing is soft at this point in time. I need to make sure with the clerk that we're meeting the statutory requirements on that. We may need to move that up a bit. And then ultimately, the board's regular meeting at the, the June meeting is where the, the formal consideration is proposed to take place. And then, of course, you have, if there's some tweak that needs to be accomplished after that, you have to adopt the budget no later than the first of the fiscal year. So with that said, if you guys would check your schedules to make sure that those workshops are amenable, will fit in. There, there are some, a couple of wiggle days, but I think this is pretty close. And what I would ask is at least to affirm that this is what generally is, meets with your expectations on how you want to carry out the budget season.
I'll start. I, I'm comfortable with this schedule. But I guess we'll, we'll get back to the clerk with our, with our calendar saying...
If there's a conflict.
Yeah, okay.
David, can I ask that when you produce the materials for us on expenses and revenue, that you give us a copy in Excel format? So if some of us want to kind of capture costs differently, just to study them as in total?
Those, those spreadsheets will be developed in Excel format, so they'll be, they'll be provided. It's just that I would, I would hope that the staff work is presented to the commissioners, and that the materials is coming from the staff as the source documents. Because I do not want to run in the circum, into a circumstance where commissioners are handing out Excel spreadsheets with the same data that the staff are bringing budget worksheets to you. So the, the staff is bringing that stuff into idea. I mean, you guys can, you guys can run the budget workshops how you want to, but the, the premise that we're, that I'm basing this on is that, that the dialogue takes place with the commissioners as the board, and then any changes will be, will be performed by the staff for the next go-around, for the next go-around. But yes, that is, those are Excel spreadsheets when we do those budget workshops. That's, that's good for the calendar. If you wanted me to lead off on, you know, there is a process that you guys had agreed upon previously in order to go through, but I'd like to, I have a comment that I would like to offer up as a preamble to that. You know, we can, we can go through the rest. You guys had about two pages of other stuff. And hopefully, my preamble is, is not going to derail that. But we do have some current events that have really focused, for me, some of the, the practicalities of, of, especially after reviewing the different worksheets that you guys brought to the group the last time, which by the way are, are fairly extensive and, and much appreciated. That type of input really helps me to figure out where the left field line is and the right field line is, you know, it kind of scopes our effort. But I'm, I try to break things down in, in simple matters. And from, from my chair, I think that the town has before it a half a dozen critical issues that are, that are ultimately going to be all-consuming. And the first one, and you, you will see this at the, probably the February the 19th meeting, is the Eastern Reach Deeper Wider Project. That we've got, we're going to have a proposal from Brunswick County to, to move forward with that Eastern Reach Deeper Wider Project in terms of an inter-local agreement. That will probably be a project that is 18 months to two years in the making. With the present, that, that's number one. And, and these are really the, the top six or so that, that I see. The, the second one, of course, is with the President's Declaration of Federal Approval of FEMA Funds for Hurricane Michael. The FEMA Florence and Michael Combination Storm Damage Mitigation Repairs, that, those two declarations together are going to result in an approximately $20 million worth of, of, of project for the board to consider how to, how to deal with, how to permit, and how to go through making that approximately 1.4 million collective inlet, inlet cubic yard sand damages, $860,000 to the Central Reach Project, 860,000 cubic yards of sand losses in the Central Reach Project. In addition to, we've, we're going to have the Lift Station 3 upgrade in the works. That is, we're wrapping up on Lift Station 4. It's anticipated we're going to move directly into Lift Station 3, that upgrade. We've got the land use plan update, the beach and inlet management plan, new start plan being created, along with whatever type of service configuration decisions on the solid waste that come, come about by this board, that implementation and how the enforcement takes place. That issue in itself is probably going to consume the staff's, a lot of the staff's time as, as we roll out or roll into that. In addition, with our new initiative on lobbying and engaging at the legislative advocacy level, those, I guess those are seven issues that, that I see are, are top tier for the board's consideration as far as prioritizing workload. But anyway, that's, that's, that's my perspective from my chair. I just wanted to register that with you.
Any questions, comments? Are we ready to move to number four?
Well, I think you guys wanted to finish up going through your two, two other pages of stuff.
Will I ask? All right, here we go.
All right. Because we've had a couple weeks to look at this, I'd actually, I'd actually like to make a point. When we create objectives, objectives are generally something laid out that there's a desire, and you can see where there are measurables that you could have to, we think this needs to be done. It's clear, it's concise, and you can see how to develop measurables. Quite a few of what is presented is, is cryptic. It's sort of, sometimes it's just almost as if, you know, want data, want to set something, but it's not really clear what you want. Are you wanting to have, for example, parking, paid parking? That's an, that, that's, that's sort of, is it to develop a plan for paid parking? It is to do an evaluation, to make a decision? It's, if you're trying to assign a must-have, nice-to-have, whatever, a lot of these are a bit, well, they're, they're, it's difficult because you don't really know exactly what step is behind it. Tax and borrowing, tax reduction. Okay, it's, I'm confused exactly what people want. Water and sewer fee review. Is it that the board wants the town to provide an overview of how things have been set, or whatever? So again, I'm just having a little bit of trouble going into exactly what the true objective is. So, I mean, this is one of the reasons we said just put the sticky notes up. It's not who put what up, it's to capture ideas. But I think behind these ideas, particularly in finance, where, you know, we have some general areas, and there's again some sort of cryptic comments made, we have to have a better idea of what the actual objective is. So I would actually ask whether, rather than going through and saying, does everybody understand this, could we take a little bit of time to flesh out exactly what the objective is behind, for example, fund balance? What's the overall objective for our fund balances? You only have two, is it, is it, is it to revisit and update the general fund policy, overall financial policy, to begin use in the fiscal year? And these other things are captured under it? Salary compensation. Provide BOC schedule of staff salaries, benefits, and salary ranges for jobs. For what purpose? Okay, for what purpose? Permit fees festival. For what purpose? I, I'm not saying that getting the information isn't valuable, but for, what is it we want to do with the information? Where do we want to go? Are we going to be evaluating all, all activities, all parks and recs activity, funded activities, for their value to the community and the town? Is it to set a policy on how we manage them? So I, 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 I am, I am asking whether we shouldn't take a little time, and we can address it again, maybe on the 15th, to make sure that we have a defined objective behind all of these pieces of data.
Fair enough.
And, I mean, I'm, I'm, again, I am perfectly fine to sit down and try to sort of put words on where I think we're wanting to go, and send it to everybody for discussion. I just want to make sure that we are not just data, 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 and in the end, there's not really a clear understanding and agreement of where we're going with the analysis of the data. Because, I mean, I don't want to get into analysis paralysis. I don't think any of us do. So I would propose, I would move that we stand back until the 15th, make sure that an objective-type statement is built around the different requests that seem to be more about information, and to then take some time for discussion. It could be the 15th, it could be the 19th, it could be, it could be at the department's input to the manager meeting for budget, whatever. But, but let's, let's try to get this a little bit clearer in what our intent is in terms of BOC objectives. Not just budget, but this is commissioners' objectives that should ideally then drive the topics that we're addressing at our BOCM meetings. Because if we have our clear objectives, that should be what we're spending a good amount of time at BOCMs discussing and forwarding. Is, is that acceptable to people? That's my motion.
Before I respond to that, can I ask, did I misunderstand? I thought we were to rank these, three, two, one, and give them to Heather, which I did.
No, we haven't finished yet.
I did. I ranked mine and I submitted it, and I thought we were getting back a ranking today.
Well, we have not gone through all of the pages to say, is there any discussion? Or is there any additional understanding? And again, once I took this home and could read all of it, and carefully look at particularly, you know, sort of the last couple pa, these last few pages, it struck me that it's not really clear sometimes what the objective is that we're after. Our, our own, our own action objective.
Then I have no question. These are titles of, of concepts, or ideas, or projects, or something. It would be nice to know, what do you want me to do with it?
Right.
If I'm going to rank it, what are you saying with Brunswick Avenue? You want to do it? You want to put a plan together?
Yeah, okay.
What do you want the town manager to do?
Right.
So that'd be a good idea.
Need some verbs.
A little expansion of what is it we expect to come out of it? Do we reset policy or whatever?
Right. So, if people are happy with it, I'll make a shot at that. Send it to the, to the town clerk to send out to everybody, and we can decide if we want to try to discuss it on the fifteenth and nineteenth, or make it part of the department's input, or make it part of a BOC workshop input to the manager.
Can, I agree, I agree with that. Can we take a second, though? There's one that I didn't understand, can we, everybody kind of?
We can still go through and say, do people understand? Yeah.
I was going to suggest, since we're here, why don't we just do, instead of you taking a shot at trying to figure out what I meant by something I put down, or John meant, why don't we just run through it, do it quickly, and whoever thought of it can expand upon it, and we can get that part out of the way.
We already did that for most of it, right? So, I think we got two pages left.
We've got finance and advocacy.
Right, left.
Left.
Right.
If, if people just want to quickly go through and make sure that we're, that, that we're, we're okay with the first couple pages being clear of what it is we want. Because there is one that I actually looked at again, it just says beach renourishment, ten million in ten years for long-term plan, and that to me is a wish, but is, and then it appears later in financial, I think, is it that we define the financial process by which we save ten million in ten years? Is it, again, is this part rather of the revisit and update, general fund policy, overall financial policy? It's, it's...
Can I answer a ques- the question that is, that is on there? The, has the three million plus two forty-one been paid into the fund? Those funds have been escrowed in the capital reserve fund, yes. The rest of your questions is board discussion, so.
Okay.
I think if I can just revisit the, a couple or three years ago, the board set with David a policy that we would try to achieve ten million dollars within ten years for beach renourishment and inlet management.
Did, did you say three years ago you said that?
Was it?
No, it was, no, it was last year.
No, it's two years ago, it was right before we were, we, I think, David, it was right before this board was elected.
Well, you were elected in seventeen, right?
I, I, I...
You were elected in seventeen.
I, I was hired in oh-eight. I was never elected.
Not you.
Oh, 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 okay.
Not, not you.
Okay, all right.
Two, three, three members of the board were only elected in seventeen, this is now nineteen.
Okay.
So, sometime in seventeen, maybe?
The capital reserve fund was officially established with the adoption of the budget last year that laid out...
That's a separate issue.
No.
The policy was set to put ten million dollars aside.
That's not correct, John.
In seventeen.
Policies in terms of finance and funds are established by ordinance, that capital reserve fund was established effective the first of July of twenty eighteen. It lays out the ten million dollars in ten years as the policy statement in that capital reserve fund ordinance. Now, it may have been talked about, but officially, officially, the fund was established effective the first of July twenty eighteen.
Yeah. I believe the policy that was set in seventeen, the board expected that future boards would certainly have the authority to do whatever they wanted to, but they would do whatever they could, wherever we could grasp money that could be put into a separate fund to preserve for the future, we would do that, hoping to achieve by, in ten years, but we knew it was almost an impossible task.
Hmm.
But we hoped to do it.
Okay, see, this, this...
I, I don't agree with that last part, but...
Don't? You don't think it's impossible, or?
No, I don't.
Thus, one of my comments about, is this really about revisiting and updating general fund policy, overall financial policy, to make sure that it's clear what the board is expecting, not hoping for, and to also make it clear that the expectations are possible, given a number of things that appear later about tax reduction, no new taxes, no new borrowing, no debt, no, you know, so, you know, we have to make it happen within the money that we get, so. Here's where I'm still saying that sometimes these objectives are not really, an, an objective has a chance, a rational chance of being achieved, if you are diligent about it, versus a wish list, or a hopes list, or a dreams list, which can also be creative.
Or a goal.
We can always have a baseball, a hope goal, a dream goal, but baseballs, baseballs need to be achievable.
They need to be doable, achievable, and realistic.
And measurable.
Right, and measurable, that would, that was, that's the world icon it came from.
Yeah.
Well, some are long-term, though, you know, so, ten years, or, or hundred percent fund balance, that's, you're, you're incrementally doing that. So, it's a long-term objective goal.
Correct.
So...
But you can set terms on that, too, Peter.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, I, I think it's pretty clear, it's a ten-year, ten million dollars is policies in place right now.
And I will, I will raise, is that the correct policy? Or is it a policy to, ideally, in the absence of storms and severe erosion, you would want to save ten million dollars in ten years? However, what is absolutely needed is adequate reserves to be able to initiate projects when disaster funding happens as a reimbursement rather than the money in your pocket? I mean, when you read different documents that come from other beach communities, they do make, they all make the point as we always do. In an ideal world where mother nature is good, and we don't have any disasters, we expect to have to repeat a central reach every ten years, and for that, we'd want ten million dollars.
Yep.
Okay? But, after three years, when you're faced with hurricanes and gales have wiped you out, isn't the point to have enough money to be able to start and, and work on the steps that you're going to have to be reimb- so you have to have enough money to get yourself going in the face of, you don't get the money in your pocket, it's not ten million, but you have to have, correct me if I'm wrong, David, we have to have enough operating expenses to get ourselves going and be able to progress. So, it's, it's, it's like, we have half of the tier, half of the objective here, we have the ideal, but we don't really have the, but what do we do in cases where? It's not the ideal world. So, what is our target to always have on hand if there are disasters? And then, if we refresh ourselves after a disaster, let's call it, we've gotten ourselves back to where we were because we had a disaster, and we had to have a program, now we're starting all over again, so now a ten-year starts again. Because we, you know, we, it's, it's like we've made good, we're back to the ideal, so now it starts again. So, I think this needs to be, that's what I'm saying, I think it's a little bit overly simplistic to simply say our objective is, and there's not, it's, it's ten million dollars in ten years, because that's the ideal.
Well, it, exactly, so, I, I, I would argue that have enough money, what does that mean?
Well, I think that's what needs, no, but I think that's what needs to come back into a little bit more discussion to clearly, because right now, what it really reads is that you want to save a million dollars a year for sand.
Yep.
Okay? And I would, I, that is based on having an estimate of half the money necessary for a central reach, okay?
And, and it's clearly understanding that there's long range, and that's a long-range plan, there's short range, and then there's what I would call event-driven planning, and, and we do that as well. But, so event-driven planning is, you know, mixed within as long and short term, and unless you have a longer range plan, that have some money, and, and we try to put a stake in the ground, what that some money means, one million per year, then...
Well, and I guess that is the, again, the justification of ten million, or just the one million a year, I think that actually does need to be carefully looked at, is that the right number? Okay? For, for the eventuality.
Sure.
Okay? And that's, and, and that comes back to just making sure the overall policy on all of our funds is correct going into the year. And then it takes into, you know, it's, because again, fund balances, we've got a lot about sand and B part, and then we come back down to general, increased reserves, it's nonspecific, it's, it's nonmeasurable, increased reserves for...
Yeah, that one is not, but, you know, look at the, the one above that, minimum of fund ration, uh, ration of, of a hundred percent, that's clearly, because right now the policy is seventy percent.
Yes, and, and again, so, I have no idea why the change to a hundred percent, how the seven, the seventy percent as I understood it was because that's what we thought we needed for a year of expenses, if we...
No, a hundred percent equals a year, so...
Well, I thought seventy percent originally.
No, a hundred, a hundred percent equals a year, so a hundred percent of the, of the year, of the budget year, that's what that is. So, the, and, and, and totally understandable, before you, you know, before you guys set, got here, we were, we were working in the thirty range percent, so we're gradually getting closer, so we didn't want to put, for your, for the other, we didn't want to put an unachievable goal out there, so we put seventy percent. Now, we're getting close to seventy, but the intent is, hey, that was a, a stepping stone, so now the real, now we're, you know, going to give a more realistic hundred percent.
But then this goes back into a discussion we had last year, where we had to say, no, it's okay for us to do something even though we aren't at seventy percent of our general fund, because that was a policy, I believe, that was established, okay? And we could, we could, even though we hadn't achieved seventy percent, we could by vote decide that it's okay, we would still use the money from the general fund, and our feeling, because we're still growing, it's acceptable to do that. So, again, revisiting how policies, just because you want to, you want to establish a minimum fund of a hundred percent, okay? But, and if you don't, what, what, we, what, if, if, until we achieve a hundred percent, We can't spend any money out of the general fund that isn't already alloc- you see, it's, it's...
You, you know, you're getting into a lot of details, but the, the direction of, and of the, that's, this, this is an example of a lot of things happening to get to that percentage, right? So, we're, we're, we're giving a policy to the budget manager to, to, you know, have that as a, as a overriding goal to get close, you know, to, to achieve that objective.
Because this could, there's, there's no debt, so this, this could go on forever, so the, these are, again, I'm trying to understand what the real, is it that we want to, we want to increase the general fund ratio by five percent a year until we achieve? What, what is the timeframe here?
I, I, I understand what you're saying, but sometimes you can't put it, so I don't want to micromanage the, the town manager to say, he's, but you can have a, within that hundred percent...
An estimate of...
An estimate, right, but, but again, I don't want to put false, you know, if he can get to a hundred percent this year, great, if he can't, I want to know the reasons, and it's still an objective out there for, for a long ra- for a long-range plan.
These are the discussions that are supposed to happen between the board and the town manager to try to understand.
In the budget, yeah.
But, not just in the budget, in, in just general, it's not just budget, it's just general discussion about, so if, if it's to achieve a minimum fund ratio of a hundred percent in the general fund within five years, it's then over to the manager of, that is an impossibility, we, in good years, we're growing at three to five percent, whatever, but it's like trying to come to grips with what is a reasonable, achievable, and the open-ended are difficult. When you inherit an open-ended, it's difficult. So, I'm just trying to, you know, again, within how many years? Or what growth per year do you consider acceptable? If you don't achieve that, it's a problem.
Is our, is our plan to resolve this here?
Well, I was, that's what I mean, I was gonna, I was gonna go away and try to put words to it, and I could have qualifiers for people to then, we could, you know, address And Mike suggested we try to do it here.
No, I, I didn't.
Well, you, you asked, perhaps.
I, I suggested that maybe the person could put some meat on the bone, so then we would know what we were going to be voting on, rather than settling.
May I suggest that on that particular item, as far as budget guidance for the development of the preliminaries, that, that we'll take the hundred percent unassigned fund balance into consideration, and do the math through the spreadsheets, and show you, show you, or tend to show you what the implications are in terms of service delivery capability, it, should it be, in order to, to go from seventy to, to a hundred, you've either got to raise revenues, you've got to cut expenses, these are the types of things that may have those types of implications. I mean, it's a, it's, it, from, from the budget side of the house, we can, we can develop that information for you with, with projections on what things, how they might play out. That's a, and then, in anticipation of, I'm assuming you guys are going to have discussions on making contributions to the capital reserve fund, taking funds out, and where it ends up, that will ultimately be the fiscal policy that's decided on, I mean, that's where we'd be. So, in terms of a working document, we'll, we will incorporate that guidance from you. Now, whether or not it ends up there, I, I don't know. But that, that's what we can do for you.
So, you're going to see whether or not it's achievable, realistic, and do, before you start measuring?
I'll, I'll tell you what the consequences of trying to implement that are.
Well, we set seventy percent, you know, it's the same principle, right? It was a goal, multi-year goal, we didn't want to dictate how, or how many, you know, per year, or per whatever, to me, it's as soon as possible, and, and we make decisions within that, within a budget framework to, to, to get there, but... Oh, let me, I'll switch subject. I don't, I don't even know what the second one is on the budget page, the next to the last page, I can't read, expedite year-end, what is that word? Whoever wrote this? Balance, but, is it trial?
What page are you on?
Six, page six.
Yeah, it says budget clarity and transparency on the top, it's, I think it's the budget page, next to the last page.
Expedite year-end trial balance, is that what you're talking about?
I think it says trial, I'm not sure what trial means.
The trial balance, the town, the town puts together a trial balance for the auditor.
Okay.
And this particular year, we were six weeks after the close of the year, and we still didn't have the trial balance, so the auditor can't start really doing the audit without the trial balance.
Okay.
And I'm just suggesting that we do some, whatever we can, to ensure that we get the trial balance done earlier for the auditor, so the audit can begin.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't aware of that, okay.
What's the ideal timeframe, and what's sort of the required time, the, the best timeframe? If it's six weeks is too long, what is it?
Well, most companies get it done within a couple of weeks.
What do, what, what do most municipalities get it done in?
I don't know that, I haven't studied other municipalities, but David's the guy to ask with his finance staff, when can you reasonably get it done, all things being in good shape? Staff there, no loss of staff, no storms. All things being in good shape, staff there, no loss of staff, no storms.
You can run it and give them one of it.
I'm sure I can't hear you.
You can run it at June thirty, but they know that we have other things that are going to take place. And they get that, and as you go through the audit, you give them updates as things come in, as things change.
But we actually sat with the auditor six weeks after the close of the year, and you were on vacation. And the answer to the auditor was, we don't have it because she's on vacation. We didn't have the trial balance.
Through the new quarter, through the new audit.
I'm just saying what happened at the.
In, in June, there's certain things that I can shoot right on over.
Adjustments you gotta make, yep, and your trial balance.
And there's a lot of things that they can work on that they don't need the trial balance to begin with. So, but I mean, so they get one, and then they get those things.
Well, just, in response to the auditor, if we can get the trial balance done earlier than six weeks after the end of the year, so he can start the audit. Because he has till November the first normally to get the audit done. So that, that, that's why I put this in here, and if I'm wrong on part of it, that won't be the first time.
What's the AFR again, Joe?
Uh, combined annual financial report, but that's put all the funds and everything, that's the major project.
That was the only, that's the only question I have, I understood everything else, and I ranked them.
When you talk about advocacy, greater involvement in regional planning with other coastal communities, more involvement in coastal advocacy groups. Again, this was gonna be commissioners' objectives. Is this, I just want to make clear, this is that the commissioners believe that commissioners should have greater involvement? Or is it town staff, or is it a combination? Because I know when I said increased participation in the NC League of Municipalities, it was both staff as well as commissioners.
Yeah, I'd say both.
Is it the same, just to make it clear?
Yep.
I would say that's even board members. That would be as, as actively engaged. I would hope we get as much information as we can from as many sources.
I did have, I did have B O C, what I call committee.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Because when we say board, sometimes it gets confusing.
Yep, yep, absolutely.
Okay, I think what everybody should just do now is, is rank them and give your rankings to Heather when you're done. Heather, you'll get mine sometime later this week, I'm not gonna be able to do it today.
Can, can I add one, one thing? And I always try to remind the commissioners of this in closing up on the, the introductory thing. I, there's several pages of things that the commissioners have brought to light, and the common theme through there, the most common theme is more, more, more. The only thing that I saw in there of less, less, less was no tax increase and fee reduction. So the dichotomy of those two goals, I believe, is apparent, and I'll end at that.
Uh, I have one more point I wanted to ask, sorry.
I thought I was gonna, gonna laugh.
I'm sorry, no, under, under financial budget, I have some questions around whoever requested employee training retirement information, because when you look at the law around personnel records, I don't believe that this kind of information can be released.
Can't.
Okay, so when we are doing these kinds of things, we have to take into consideration that everything that is being asked for is legally appropriate, and I do not believe those two are.
Which one were it?
This. I don't believe, okay, people's training, um, training records are part of their personnel file, and you have to go into the law about what can be provided out of a personnel file, and that is not included in it. And projected retirement, you cannot project retirement. That is illegal. That is illegal to supposition, I believe it is illegal to supposition of retirement, be it in government or industry. So I, I would go to the town attorney as necessary to make sure that what's being asked for can be legally expected, but I don't think those are.
Yep, agreed.
I guarantee I'm finished.
Anyone else? Well, are we now ready to move to the next item on the agenda? Without objection, we're going to number four, discussion and possible action on solid waste. Who's, whose baby is that? All right, Joe?
I got it, yeah. With the, uh, with the input, input that I've been provided with from the public and my previous concerns regarding the eighty percent plus of homeowners, I have provided the following information that I'm gonna read. I have provided this information previously to the commissioners, so they already have it, and that. So let me read what I wrote. As I previously stated at the December meeting and our January commissioners' meeting, I continue to be concerned about the eighty-plus percent of homeowners that are part-time residents not being able to comply with the revised trash ordinance. And as a result of not being able to comply, potentially receiving civil fines. Trash containers being left at street side after trash collection day is not a new concern for the homeowners of Holden Beach. A number of years ago, that was apparently identified as a concern that was recognized as an issue on Ocean Boulevard. And the solution to resolve, to my knowledge, the solution to resolve the visibility of containers, trash containers, from being left out weeks at a time, along with other concerns to include safety and environmental, was addressed. The town resolved this issue by organizing a container rollback service to homeowners on Ocean Boulevard only, with the expense for this service provided by the town. Over the years, there have been many new homes built, along with new construction underway throughout the island. If we were concerned a number of years ago regarding the negative appearance and the potential safety concerns pertaining to trash containers being left out at street side after a trash collection day, I am recommending we focus on implementing the same rollback process rationale that was implemented for the homeowners on Ocean Boulevard and do it throughout the island. This will help to address the eighty-plus percent of homeowners that currently have a problem in complying with the revised trash ordinance. Rollback of trash and recycling containers. Empty containers will be rolled back to street side of the home, under the home, or to a corral if available. I also completely understand that this suggestion will not totally resolve all of the issues. There will still be times when an individual home does not roll their container to the street in time for trash collection. In that particular case, I recommend the container remain at the street and not rolled back to the house, a full container. Not be rolled back to the house. After the next trash collection day, or if there's rental agency involvement due to a renter complaining, that container, after being empty, will be rolled back to the street side of the home, under the home, or to a corral if available. There will also be times that a part-time homeowner frequents their home and will need to roll their trash container street side for collection. That might be a number of days before the actual collection day. To accommodate these individual needs, I recommend eliminating the forty-eight-hour street requirement before the designated collection day. With the implementation of island-wide rollback containers after the collection day, the majority of containers will be removed from street side and help to resolve the visibility, environmental, and safety concerns. Rollout of trash and recycling containers, based on the numerous potential liability unknowns and other logistical issues, I recommend a rollback island-wide program not be put in place. The comment under penalty. The issue of penalties in the ordinance should also be revised to be consistent with the wording currently outlined in fifty point oh six. I like the wording in fifty point oh six. That says property owners who are found in violation. And you're probably gonna ask me a question about, well, you just took away all the violations. No, I didn't. Because there's still violations pertaining to people putting limbs and twigs out and branches out and stuff like that beforehand. It specifically states when you can put it out and how it's put out. Also, that there's no trash, if you have a trash container, no, no additional trash on top of the trash cans or on the ground alongside of the trash cans. That would still be a violation. So let me read it again. Property owners who are found in violation of this ordinance may receive written notice from the town that they are in violation of the ordinance. Those so affected will be asked to correct the situation so they can come into compliance with the code or receive a civil fine of fifty dollars per day per offense. My objective today is to have a discussion and also to have the town update the ordinance, which is ordinance eighteen dash sixteen. Have the draft ordinance available for the next meeting, which is on the eighteenth, so that the public can see the revisions and the comments and the changes. And hopefully receive public comment at that point. I do not recommend voting at that point on the eighteenth of the ordinance. My recommendation is that we let a little more dust settle, consider the input from the public, and then vote at the next regular scheduled meeting in March on the ordinance. Those are my comments.
Anyone else here?
I, I, I got a question, Joe.
Sure.
And I just want to add to the, your comment there, the last sentence, paragraph two.
Mm-hmm.
Um, with the expense for this service provided for the town paid for by occupancy tax. I just wanted to add that for clarity, because that's where that service is currently paid for through the occupancy tax collection in the B part.
So it comes out of B part?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Um, and, and I just wanted to add that for clarity, because that, that's a fact. Um, and then the, um, I, I guess I got a different, a different copy, um, uh, from what you said, or maybe I didn't hear it correctly, that the, uh, the last sentence in the rollout of trash and recycling.
Right.
Containers, you are recommended that a rollback island-wide program not be put in place?
I'm sorry, a rollback be put in place.
A rollback.
Yeah, it's, it's worded correctly, I just didn't say it.
Program be put in place, okay, because, and I only wanted to clarify that because we've got a RFP out on the street now that envisions that.
I'm sorry, I read that wrong.
Okay.
I certainly recommend a rollback, as we've been discussing. And rollback, obviously, that's come to my attention through the various emails that have been sent to me too as well.
Okay, and, and, and the, um, the rolling back of empty containers, there is a disconnect between what we've put out in the RFP and what, what you're proposing here in, because the RFP is rolling everything back. Um, just, I just want to point that out. And we, and that, and as those bids come in, we can certainly, you know, discuss it, but I just wanted to.
His, his is less work, right, basically.
Yeah.
What he's proposing is less work.
Well, I, I don't know, because then it complicates enforcement, so.
Yeah, I wonder, wonder.
I just wanted to register that as a, as a.
Yeah, that's certainly a valid point, but I, I really don't see the, the issue there because rolling back a, a full can of garbage creates other concerns and other issues that have been brought to my attention too as well.
Agreed.
And I think it's a simple matter of either you determine it, the people that are rolling the can back, it's either by weight, or you lift the top up, look in, and then close it, and then make your decision.
So, but my point being is what we have on the street does not reflect that.
Yeah, right.
Correct.
So.
So what you basically want to do is just take it back to what it was, where you can just put your trash out and leave it out however long you want, which is what was objected to and one of the things that the Solid Waste Committee commented on. So I'm, um, I'm, I'm, I guess what I'm just saying is, for a year, we've been discussing this, and that's fine. Uh, you are basically not improving the situation. All you're doing is adding cost to the town for rolling back island-wide but not actually mitigating the issues that were identified as needing improvement by the committee that worked on this.
I guess we could agree to disagree, but it certainly does improve the situation because it does take the cans off the street and rolls them back to the house.
No, they're still gonna be, if they're full, they won't be rolled back, and you can still put them in corrals that are all over the place and not necessarily secure.
Yeah, I don't know what the percentage of that would be, Pat, but it's certainly pretty low to me. But I'm certainly against rolling back full cans to the house. And as identified today also, and I appreciate the comment, that, I don't know about you, but we have, we have a miramid of deer and other, other types of, of animals that are around our house. And I certainly don't want them getting into trash and moving that trash and spilling that trash all over the place.
Okay, for helping me to understand, the timeframe for this proposed service would be for the winter wind.
That's, I'm.
Excuse me. It was knocking me off the chair.
Uh, the, um, the RFP envisioned the implementation, the last six weeks of the fiscal year to coincide with season starting and then, from then on, year-round. Uh, to accommodate the pickup schedule, the trash and recycling pickup schedule, so.
Is, is it clear to them that in the wintertime, they're not gonna have nearly as much rollback as they had in the summer?
The number of, excuse me, we've identified the houses, the number of cans, the workload associated with it, and also the calendar of pickups, so that's what the bid is gonna be predicated on.
But I, I'd like to respond to.
Sure.
To Joe's position. We, we all know that this is a topic that, before this board came into play, there was a community board on solid waste that made a lot of recommendations to the town that in preparing the ordinance as it now stands, we took a lot of those considerations and, we took a lot of those suggestions into consideration. We discussed this on numerous occasions. We, all five of us, voted for the current ordinance after a lot of discussion.
That's not true, that's not true.
I'm, I'm sorry, okay. Majority, now. I'm sure that we can fix this and we, and we will make some adjustments to it. But what I would prefer we do is to leave the current ordinance in place. We were thrown a bit of a curveball just a week or two ago when Waste Management unilaterally declared that they were going to change the dates of pickup and, and the schedule, which would adversely affect the ordinance as we wrote it. I'd rather not do things piecemeal. We, my suggestion would be just leave the ordinance as it wa, as it is and not enforce it, which was our plan. We weren't going to enforce it. We were going to have a time for it to break in, for people to get educated, for people to get attuned before we started any enforcement measures. And we should wait, I believe April is a date when Waste Management is going to come up with its final decision on the pickup date?
Maybe.
Okay.
There, there, there's some, there's some indecision on their part as to actually if they're going to implement it or not. So it, it, it's, it's really soft, especially after our dialogue with them.
Right. I, I got you. But if, but if they come back in April and say, well, okay, we're going to keep the Tuesday plan or, or we're going to change it, that's the time when we can look at this and, and make any adjustments that are necessary because right now we don't have to make any adjustments. We, we had a plan in place that wasn't being enforced. Actually was more stringent than the ones proposed now because there was no forty-eight hour. It was bring it down the night before or take, and take it back. So the plan in place now is actually more liberal than the one that was in place before. And if we don't enforce it, but wait until we have some time, more input, I don't see where there's any hope. Rather than putting out another plan, which is, we all know it's not going to make everybody happy. And then you have to revise that plan perhaps, and then revise it, who knows? Wait till we get all the information, sit down, discuss it, and come up with what we believe is, is the best plan for the entire, for the entire island at that time, rather than doing things piecemeal up to, up to the date we find out when the actual service is going to be provided.
You know, I guess I keep, I, I keep coming back to this, you know, I voted for this in December. And if I would have realized back in December what I know now, and I have, I think I said a thank you, a big thank you to the Homeowners Association on Holland Beach for sending information out. And that's probably one of my other questions pertaining to enforcement, right? Have there been any educational, any education addressed to the public pertaining to this? And I guess when I say public, I include that eighty-plus percent. Number one.
I'll, I'll, I'll comment on enforcement. My dialogue with the staff is that the staff has significant concerns on what enforcement actually entails. And until we get to that and some of these other variables known, certain, we're lost on how to enforce that ordinance.
Yeah.
Tell me if I'm wrong, Tim.
That, that what, the ordinance that I, I don't know, y'all may have a different handout out there, but the ordinance that's laying on my desk, I don't think is enforceable. I've talked to other staff members in town. I've talked to my staff. I'm not sure how you, the, the Owen was not enforced because really it was unenforceable too. The manpower it would take to enforce an ordinance that's that ambiguous. It, it, I don't know how you would do it. And on top of that, it doesn't have, it doesn't designate who does the enforcement. Code enforcement doesn't enforce everything in the code enforcement book. The police enforce some of it. David's got enforcement portions in that book. Code enforcement enfor, enforces some things. There's no designated who enforces it. It's actually under the public works section of the book. They don't have manpower to enforce it. They got as many people as I do. But there is no, there's a whole lot of stuff in there like, you know, trash cans that smell. You know, it's in there. You know, I can tell you right now, you can't enforce that. There's no way that I can, I can, I can reasonably assume and get a determination as to which trash can smelling. Time somebody fifty dollars and then if they challenge it, what am I going to do with that? Because I can't prove what trash can I, I smell. I mean, there's another portion in there talks about adequate numbers of dumpster for, for restaurants. There's no, there's no degree of adequacy. I don't know what is adequate. I go out there and tell him he's got to have ten dumpsters. He challenges it. We end up in court. I have no chart. I have no science. I have nothing. The four, the one that was in there originally was unenforceable. I don't think this one is too. You even took your rollback times, when they're going to be in and out. We're not even at work on those times. They're six and six. The town's not open at six o'clock. I, I don't, that, that, I, I, we went completely through it line by line. The, the, our department enforced that section, and I think I said it in a meeting. And we only did it out of either it was complaint-driven or we, we saw it while we were out there. We would enforce that portion. We're talking about trash on top of stuff, trash laying around, or trash should have been there for a while. And we were typically, out of the knowledge of the department, we would either give the homeowner's number or address and send them a letter, or if it was a rental, we called the rental company and they, they usually cleaned it up pretty well. But we had no active, that was just the inspection department being good employees for the town, recognizing their problems and, and, and taking care of them. But there was no set policy. And I don't know that we could have i, if we wanted to, but there is no way to police twenty-one hundred trashcans and, 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 and enforce that ordinance. It's just, I just don't see it. Plus it don't have a severability clause. Maybe it's in there somewhere, but I haven't found it. And it also doesn't have a, a appeals process. There's no due process. If I go out there, like you said, and I all of a sudden start finding people, when they, if I'm wrong, what's our appeals process? It, it's, it's missing some basic things that you would need to enforce it, but the manpower is just not going to be there.
Yeah. Yeah, I think you alluded to this in the last meeting, the last commissioners' meeting too as well, and I certainly listened to that point. And that's why I'm, I'm recommending changes.
Tim, have you talked to the town attorney? The town attorney worked with the staff and the commissioners on the wording, and then the next step was for everybody to sit down and figure out what was going to be an enforcement policy and how it could work. So.
I've not talked to, I've not talked to anybody about this.
Well, I am simply saying the town attorney twice came, I believe twice came into the town office or dealt with us over the phone once and came in once and worked through this ordinance to where she felt it was going to be enforceable, but we still need to have how it is going to be enforced and with what manpower. It isn't that it's, you know, all laid out in the ordinance because you don't have to lay everything out in the ordinance as the town attorney's recommendation. You can define other parts in other ways. So there's still the next step of talking to staff about what enforcement options are, what are the things that really want to be focused on, and then how to make it happen. And if how to make it happen ends up being an impossibility within budget and manpower, things are going to have to be backed up. But again, I would encourage you to talk to the town attorney with your concerns because she sat with us and helped us and in the end was at the meeting where it was signed off on, okay? So I'm not saying your concerns are not legitimate, but to say you don't see that it's enforceable as if it's not legal, then the town attorney should be talked to.
Well, what I'm saying is, is that I, I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's enforceable. And, and like I said, it's got multiple facets to why I would think it's enforceable. And I think that's probably the same reason it wasn't enforced before. It's, it's, it's.
Well, one reason it wasn't enforceable before was that some of the stuff that was in there, it talked about different things that, but not, not the key section. There actually were fines in the original. There were fines in the original ordinance, but it didn't apply to the, it was the town's intent that people keep their bins under or alongside their house, except when, on pickup day. That was not part of the enforcement. In fact, it was totally unclear what the enforcement applied to. That's one of the reasons we redid this, was to try to make it clearer what parts were and were not going to be potentially enforceable. How it's going to be enforced is not defined yet. This is true.
Let me, you know, add here that once we've received information from Waste Industries that there was going to be a change in the date, we quit.
We, we, we stopped.
We stopped doing anything.
Let me ask a question about that, David. Is, is, I didn't know, is the, is that public knowledge? I mean, was that published? I know it is now. Was it published beforehand?
No.
Yeah, so that's another.
It was, it was, it was an office visit.
Understood.
Um, with the staff and then, um, and then with the county staff, town management. And there has been no announced change in the date.
But it's a proposed, well, how, how would you state it? Proposed by Waste Industries change?
Intended.
It's an intended change that we've taken grave exception to and they've.
And they're challenging.
And they've, um, they're doing a flyby, a go-around to relook at it.
David, if.
So I, I don't know where they're going to end up, but we've, we've met with county and Waste Industry and they seem to have taken a step back and are relooking at their decision. Now, whether or not.
To your point, Mike. Nobody else knows about it, right? It was kind of a.
But, but we're, we're talking about it to make decisions right now, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, there may be.
We have to make that public. We have to make everybody aware of, of that.
And a, as of right now, I, I don't know if we're going to have the same schedule or not have the same schedule. I mean, I just don't know.
Yeah, I think if the schedule changes, it, it, it just changes everything.
Obviously, obviously, yes, if the schedule changes. To me, the one thing to think about in terms of what is in the current ordinance is we currently have that there will be no fines until May, or there won't, until May of two thousand nineteen. If we are concerned that even if we keep Tuesday, it's all still going to be in, it's still all going to be morphing and soft, we can move, we can alter that date to make it twenty-twenty so that fines are not going to be imposed to, again, allow us to go through a season of seeing where things are, issuing, let's just say, warnings that this doesn't, you know, to get a flavor of things. So.
Who's, who's going to issue the warnings?
Well, that again comes, you know, this was one of the points that I'm going to remind you. John and I agreed we would sit down with the town and try to go through some of the enforcement things and how we envisioned it and everything. And we're trying to set up a meeting. We sort of stopped for a couple of weeks, again, caught aback by the Tuesday to Thursday thing. But we're in the process again of trying to identify, when can we sit down and do this? Whether it is issuing a citation or issuing a warning, it is a similar situation. But we agreed to do that to try to see if we can keep this moving forward.
You know, I'm glad that you recognize the fact that, you know, these, these fines, they may first date. And the reason why I keep putting this on the agenda every month, every month, and I will continue to put it on the agenda every month until we have some solutions to this that, that are manageable. We have, we have an enforcement group that can enforce it, number one. We have eighty-plus percent of the, of the residents in this town that have clearly stated to us, they cannot comply with the ordinance.
I have received about, less than a hundred emails, okay?
A hundred is too much.
We have twenty-four hundred properties here. I have received less than a hundred emails. I am listening and thinking on every one of them, believe me. But please do not make it sound as if we have had feedback from eighty percent of our residents and that it is all negative. Let us be, let us be clear where we are, okay?
Did you get a positive feed? Did you get positive feedback? I haven't.
I have gotten a few.
I haven't gotten any.
Yes, you did yesterday, as a matter of fact.
When?
It came last night from one of the people.
Well, maybe I didn't open it.
Who worked on this committee, who worked on this committee.
Can, can I?
I'm just saying, please do not over-exaggerate how many specifics we have heard from. And they don't all have issue on every one of the points, okay? And in fact, many of the concerns, if there is a rollout option offered, which Commissioner Frere said he would take as the lead, it could fix the situation. I don't think we're going to be able to get this in place before this season where everything's perfect. No. Thus my statement, do we want to move? We can easily move back the fine part. Let's try to keep the ordinance that we would like to see happen in place to improve the situations that this, that this committee identified and that I thought we were all in agreement on when we started this procedure last winter. And then see if with some education and some monitoring, we can actually get the big issues into everybody's DNA that they're following it. Similar to, it took a couple of years on the no-beach equipment overnight, or it will get taken away. It took a couple of years for everybody to sort of catch on, but it's an improved situation.
There's a, there's a number of issues I'd like to talk about, but I'll go back to Tim. We've, I, I can only say I'm, I'm a little surprised at your position because you sit in on every one of the board of commissioners' meetings and you never, to my recollection, said that you thought that this was unenforceable. So if, in the future, in the.
That's because of, until about three or four days ago, I didn't think I was enforceable.
But, but, so, so, wait, wait, then, then let me stop you there. Then you're not questioning the legality of it. You're questioning the ability to enforce it. To go back to what Pat was saying.
I don't think that's anything written, written that says enforceable. I'm, I, David said, correct me if I'm wrong, Tim, but he didn't say, Tim's, this is Tim, I, I talked to you then, Darren. What did you, what was your opinion?
I was, I agree with Tim.
I talked to you then, Chris. What was your opinion?
Well, wait a second.
Well, they all, they're in the meetings too, Mike. Look, at the same time, if you, if, if I've got to defend myself like that, how many meetings were had about trash? How many meetings outside the board of commissioners were had about trash?
We had two special meetings in addition to discussion at six or eight B O C Ms over a year. Two special meetings, each of which, as I recall, we then referred to at the next B O C M with where we had gotten to. Definitely trying to keep everybody up to date. So none of this has been.
How many meetings were had at the town hall with staff? There was meetings had at the town hall with staff?
We had two, again.
How many?
Well, we had two special meetings specifically on trash. And then there were six or eight B O C Ms that, again, things were gone through and updates given and staff were at those. There was at least one, and I, it might be two, meetings where the town attorney was here with some of the staff discussing ordinance.
Wa, wa, wait a second. Let me, let me go back to, to my first, what I said. If anybody is sitting in staff in the town as we're discussing an issue and they feel that our discussion or the decision we're going to come down, I mean, we voted on this. There, there was a, there was an opportunity for anybody, whether it was the police department, the public works department, or the inspections department to say, I don't think this is enforceable. That, that document was out there. Let me finish. That document in and of itself, whether I talked to you, whether I brought you in, whether I asked your opinion, doesn't matter. That document was out there for you to comment on, and I expect you to comment on it. If, if I'm wrong, then tell me I'm wrong before I vote on it, not after I vote on it. That's any, that's anybody in staff, anybody in the town. Don't, don't wait till, till we, till I make a mistake and then tell me I made the mistake.
I haven't told you I made a mistake. I've only given my opinion, Mike. I don't know why I'm debating with, with the council. If David Hewitt tells me to enforce this ordinance, Tim Evans is going to enforce this ordinance. I was asked my opinion and give it. But at the same time, do y'all really expect us to sit up here and debate with y'all during a, a board meeting about whether what you're presenting is right or wrong?
No. No.
Especially if we don't even know if we're gonna be encompassed or involved in it whatsoever. Because we don't and we're not, I'm not going to. Are you going to start interjecting in the board meetings your opinion of something that y'all are working on? I'm not going to do that. I'm not going to do that. My opinion was just asked. I was just asked to say, am I correct or not?
Let me add, let me add here that the enforcement methodology was going to be a topic of discussion with the commissioners that, and I believe that we've arranged a meeting on the thirteenth or twelfth to do just that. Whenever that ordinance was voted on, enforcement was identified as an issue, as we're gonna hold off and not enforce it. And, and it was, the how to of enforcement has always been soft. Because we, I mean, there's, it's been soft.
And I don't know how many times we have said at meetings that putting together this ordinance, the idea was not to turn this into a revenue stream, to make this into a fine, fine, fine as a way of correcting things. It was gonna be about education and sort of behavior modification and trying to get people to do what the intent is, which is get the island looking better in the long run, so, you know. It's been designated, it's the next point, it's the next topic. Two of us are gonna be discussing with town staff thoughts, reservations, how it might happen, what it might take. You know, it's not like we just said glory be, we're, we're, we're done. This is a continuing effort, including what do we do about rollout. None of this is like cast in stone like the Ten Commandment tablets. We've said, we can tweak, if we find this doesn't work, there's nothing that keeps us from bringing it out again and fixing it. My husband saw a great statement recently. If Plan A doesn't work, there's twenty-five more letters in the alphabet.
Well, that's, that's what I'm looking for, the other letters in the alphabet, and that's why I'm recommending it. We have something written now that's currently, I have the floor, please.
Okay.
We currently have a, an ordinance that's in place and we have people that can't comply to it. And these, that's the bottom line, people can't comply to it. And these are, these are, these are, these are not just twenty percent, they're not ten percent. This is eighty plus percent of homeowners. And they, they should have the ability of coming here, having a good time, enjoying their home, putting their trash bins out, whether it's Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, and who knows what garbage day, collection day we're gonna end up with, that's another issue and that. But let's at least work with these folks. I, I guess I'm gonna ask you this question. If, if the ordinance goes in place as you're proposing, does that mean that people in Winding River can put their trash cans out any day they want now? They can leave their trash cans out for, for five days or six days? Once again, you and I have had this discussion on, on, Mike, it has nothing to do with the town as much as it has everything to do with the covenants in Winding River. And if I bought my property in Winding River, I knew those covenants. And if I purchased that property, I signed the document indicating I would comply with those covenants. But are those people smarter? They had an opportunity. These folks don't have an opportunity. They have nowhere to go. Oh, contraire. There was always a ordinance on the books that if you read it, said you had to have your trash out at six o'clock at night, you had to have the can back the next day. So there's no difference. If the ordinance was there telling the people what the rules were, no different than your, than your covenant. What I'm asking you is, why is it impossible for the people who live outside of Winding River to comply with the rule, but the people who live in there somehow comply with it? How, how, how is that, how is that possible? Mike, you, you can, you can miss, you're totally missing my point. These people have no way of doing it, no way of complying. That's why it's important to have the rollback, so these cans get rolled back. And, and we've, and we, we already agreed that that was going to be part of the plan. I mean, if you look at it, what, what we're, what we're really have a problem with is one part. It's, it's one section of the plan that says containers will be located at the street no earlier than six P M., the evening before designated collection days during the summer rental season. For the rest of the year, containers will be located at street side no more than forty-eight hours before designated collection. Nothing else is in dispute here. A lot of the people, including Mr. Massey, obviously didn't get all the information because you're concerned about leaving your can out and then getting fined fifty dollars a day for the next ten days. Can't happen because we're gonna roll the cans back.
It can happen for five days, right?
It can't, if you.
David, is it between Tuesday?
No, it's a different issue. That's rolling the can out. What I'm saying is if, once the trash is picked up, a lot of people who communicated with me were concerned that they would get a fine because their can wasn't back. Because they leave, they leave and they're not coming.
That's not my concern.
Okay. But a lot of people have that concern that they're gonna be fined for some terrible amount of days.
My concern is between, if you put your can out on Tuesday.
I got you.
I mean, Wednesday, you know, and it gets picked up on Saturday, you got Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, it was three hundred dollars, or a hundred and fifty dollars.
Right, right, I got you. That's, that's, that's the one, that's the one issue here, is just the rollout. And so I would, I would say again to what, what I said earlier, before we start tinkering with this, we should have a rollout plan. We should address what, what Tim is concerned about. Just, just what, what he said about enforceability, severable. We should look at all of those aspects so that we have a plan that addresses those concerns. And we have a plan that addresses your concerns. So at the end of the day, we take everything into consideration and make the ordinance what we deem the ordinance should be. Mike, I thank you. Rather than making piecemeal changes as we go along. Since we're not enforcing it, there has really been no change and there's going to be no change until we decide what that change should be.
Although, just to comment, I am seeing that there are more trash bins being stored underneath people's stairs and things instead of in corrals. I know that we have less than twenty percent of properties, I think, on the island that have corrals, but some people have started moving their bins back.
I have a few comments. I, I, I totally agree with you, we could possibly wait to implement any more changes because you're conflicting, you know, Pat's saying that, you know, this is the start, we could change anytime we want, true. So I think what we did was we put a stake in the ground and, and got a lot of feedback. Otherwise, we don't get feedback unless it, it's, it's actually an ordinance. So you don't get any feedback, obviously, because we got it. Same as the, as the, you know what? So, so there's also a group of people though that, and I think we're all a member of those, that group, that would not use this service, don't need this service and, and would be paying for it. That was my argument. I don't know even what the, this is gonna cost, the town. And I think, I won't say the word, but I, I, I think we should not have done anything without knowing what the cost is. I don't do things without knowing what the cost is. The other point is, so, so therefore it's, you know, it's, it could be optional from, from a, a pretty large group of people that would not ever use this service, don't need this service. The same problem though is for rollouts, even more the case. The folks that come here occasionally, so, so are they rolling out empty garbage cans? Or they have to go and check every garbage can that folks only come, you know, a dozen times a year or whatever, or in the winter? Hardly anybody is here using their trash to roll out. So rollout is not simple at all. It would have to be optional because we'd be paying for something that most people don't use most of the time. And, and so we, I've accepted that we're on the rollback. There's a small group that would pay for something that they would never use because it would be more too, I think it would be too cumbersome to administer checking constantly whether, you know, this person has it or not. It's, people compare it to recycling, much easier. You got a big blue can out there, so you can, you know, roll that back. It's pretty simple to roll back anything, or roll, roll forward. But it, it's almost, it's very, very cumbersome, in my opinion, to, to do optional and it, and, and the optional would be much more in play for rolling out. And I'd be, I'm, I'm anxiously looking forward to see what the price is for what we've already signed up for. And I'd also, to be honest with you, I'd like to understand what, what the price would be for the option too. For the option of rolling back and the option of rolling, what the, what the, rolling forward.
You know, when we discussed rollout, we had a number of options and some of it was, was more fee based and things like that. And there was a decision made that it was just better to do it island wide.
I agree.
Okay? And so I think we need to, at this point, figure out what an optional rollout can look like to address the issues. The rollback, it had been expressed over the last couple of years by many people who didn't live on Ocean Boulevard West, that it wasn't fair if it wasn't island wide.
I agree. So the rollback's easy. The can's out there, it's out there, right?
So the rollback, let's just, the rollback is, is, is done. Let's, if we're gonna talk about optional things and the complexity, let's talk about it with rollout.
I, I'm just telling you, the feedback, we go, you know, like I said, we got a lot of, we got some feedback about people who don't see a need for it. But there's also a lot of things you don't see a need for. I don't have kids, so they don't use the can, all kinds of things like that. So people can live with that.
A rollback would not complete on.
So Joe's proposing a few, I think, things that, you know, I'm not happy, you know, that they can sit out there for seven days or, or four days. But I don't think we're ever gonna have a perfect system, to be honest with you. Because it's, we're, we're very diverse. I think that's the difference between us and, you know, where I, I previously lived Concord. You would never be able to have your trash out for three or four days, never in any other, other city. And including the developments around here too. They're, they're just different animals. People live there. You don't have the eighty-nine percent that, that don't live, that live here full time. That's, there's a big difference between us and other communities.
One of the reasons, I'm gonna remind everybody again, one of the reasons for rollback of full cans is too many times renters miss the rollout for getting the garbage picked up. You now have two, three, four full bins sitting at the street and they stay at the street.
For seven days, I'm sorry.
For, no, for, until the following Tuesday.
Or whatever. But it could be potentially seven days in the winter. But the other problem is, if they go away, if we roll it back and they don't come back into town for two months, you, you got a bigger problem. So that, is it, no perfect.
No, there is no perfect, but it was predominantly an in-season problem when there were all of these bins and when the full bins are left at the road and a new rental family comes in, it starts to be heaping bags alongside the already full bins rather than maybe saying, all these bins are full, I need to call somebody and get it taken care of. So it's, it's a situation of you roll them back to the house, it's recognized. They should call whoever the rental management company is or whoever takes care of the property and say, we have a problem here, we have no bins. Again, if they're sitting at the street already, I'm sorry, but what I see is they just start stacking bags up alongside the already full bins. For some reason, it doesn't register the same as, I have a problem here.
Some, some homes, excuse me, some homes don't rent every week.
I understand.
And then you have the full cans rolling back to the house and then you create another issue, an environmental concern there. I don't, you know, animals tearing into garbage and everything else, depending upon how that trash is left. You know, as Peter said, there's, there's, there's no real easy solution to this.
There's no perfect solution.
Although I did listen, I, I listened to Alan last time too, when, when he spoke about, you know, as a real estate company and a rental company, that, you know, it's, to me, if I'm renting a house and I find a full garbage can, you know who I'm going after, right? I'm going after the people that rented me the house and asked for help. And nine out of ten times, I mean, maybe a hundred percent of the time, they're gonna help, they're gonna support. But I, I am really against rolling full trash cans back.
I, I haven't chimed in and I, I've given so much thought to this because we have fortunately a lot of feedback. I don't know the numbers and I've had both positive and negative. The positives, I think, were all from resident owners that were happy to see that we're doing something about trash can, they didn't like seeing that sort of thing. As I've gone through it, and I knew the minute I walked out of this building after the last meeting, I had voted incorrectly. I understood and had in my mind that we were doing a draft change, update, but weren't going to enforce it for considerable time in the future till we saw if it worked. So it was sort of a draft mode. But the word went out to the public that this was an ordinance and it was gonna be enforced. They didn't get anything about it's not gonna be enforced. It hit me because I was a non-resident owner who rented and paid ten thousand dollars a year in taxes to the town. More than most residents do because most residents don't rent their house. So I brought in on a hundred thousand dollar a year income, you got six thousand dollars of rental taxes and you got about six or seven thousand from me for the property that I owned on the beach. That's a big issue. If ninety percent of our people are non-residents, we are blessed that other people are paying ninety percent of our expenses. They're allowing us to keep the beach in the condition it's in, they're allowing us to have the police force we have, all the services we have from the town, they pay the bills. So I'm thinking as a commissioner, I gotta think about them. And as I went back and looked at this, I realized I should not have supported an ordinance that's extremely difficult to comply with because I, as a homeowner, can't get people to do work for me here and I'm mayor pro tem and live on the beach and I can't get people to do the work. My neighbor this weekend called three electric companies, can't get an electrician to come and help over the house. She's a non-resident owner. We had the storm, I had a builder for five weeks put me off, week to week to week to week, to do the work. I finally had to say, forget it, and I went to Gerald Brown and Gerald Brown in two hours was there, eight days later had the house fixed. I was lucky, I know him. He was willing to come and do it for me. It's a chore. If you don't live here, as I, when I lived in Luxembourg, I had no way except to, to rely on Hobbs Realty to take care of the business for me. And I do think I was different as a buyer than the guys at Winding River. When they sign a contract to buy, they're signing an agreement to follow certain rules. When I bought this house at five fifteen, I had no idea about the book of ordinances. I had no idea there was a set of rules that could punish me. And I will tell you, if I'm back there now and you told me, if the, if, I was buying through Alan now, I said, oh, by the way, if you don't get your trash can out, right, you're gonna get fifty dollars every time that happens. And if you leave your yard stuff in the yard, if somebody does that, you're gonna get fifty dollars a day. I only showed up once a year. I'm gonna owe ten thousand dollars in fines by the time I get back. If anybody bothers to tell me and I'm traveling and you can't get in touch with me with a letter, it's a monstrous problem for distant guys. And I'm seeing what we've done is we've set really difficult to comply with rules and we're gonna put onerous fines on them if they don't comply. I don't think that's fair. I think we've gotta come up, we've been for years, as Alan pointed out, we've been years dealing with this. We don't have a solution and I don't think we should have an ordinance until we have the complete solution in hand. And like Joe said, if we do next month or the month after, we have what we think is the final one, in this case, I would prefer to have a second reading. Put it out to the public, let P O A send out the message, this is what's being proposed. Come back at the next meeting before they take their final vote.
Do you guys remember that we had draft ordinance out August or September that got delayed because of the hurricane that was out again and then was amended? We had something out there for four months.
Out where?
Out, as part of the packet out on the.
On the packet, but that's not all the non-residents who don't live here, didn't know about that.
But I'm simply saying that it's not like there wasn't something out there for the groups that help the non-residents to start looking at and speaking up earlier than later. And I appreciate all of the second homeowners who have commented and I have said several times, I took them into account as best I could in all of my thinking because I was a second homeowner for five years who didn't rent their property out. So I was also trying to figure out. So I was also trying to figure out the best way to get the trash picked up without causing issues. It takes some planning. I know it's not easy. But to think that we haven't tried to consider everybody in what we've done, I think is a disservice to this board. If we didn't get it right, okay, but to, to make it sound like we didn't consider everybody.
I didn't say that.
We've been considering everybody from the get-go.
I didn't say that at all. I do think though, that what we put out was, it needs significant repair. I don't think it's ready to be rolled out, and we probably shouldn't have rolled it out.
Yeah, I'm not, you know, my, my argument is not where we were three months ago, four months ago. This whole thing is, is about today. This whole thing is about people not being able to comply with it. People, our own people are telling us that there's issues with enforcement, there's issues with this, and that could all be resolved, that could all be taken care of. Folks, we have a problem today. May first will be tomorrow, the way these calendars shift. I mean, I mean, Christmas has come and gone, right? And January's come and gone. Before we know it, it'll be May, May first.
As I said, it's a very easy thing for us to amend the ordinance with one sweep of the enforcement date.
I, I was gonna say, what, what we really, we don't have a problem, tell you, Joe. We have an ordinance. The ordinance is a problem.
Yeah.
Nobody disagrees with that. But if we're willing to just leave the ordinance there dormant, not enforce it, then we don't have a problem, right? The people aren't gonna be fine there, it's gonna be no problem. And we're gonna, and we're gonna look at all the various aspects. I mean, Peter was, my recollection is you were taking on the rollout portion, right? When we had the last meeting, you said you were gonna take that on?
Yep.
So we, and you are, and you were right. Your, your position was, we shouldn't have made any decision till we had that incorporated into the ordinance.
And, and the price.
Right, but, but I'm just saying, so, so that's what I'm saying now. Odd as it may sound to you, I agree with you. So that we, we should.
Say that slow, like, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna.
It's, it's on tape. So, so we should just wait and do this in a conscientious manner, rather than jumping in to do things peacefully. We don't have a problem.
But my,
We have something that has to be resolved, but it's not a problem.
Completely in agreement. The only issue that I have is that if we don't put out a notice, that in fact, this is just a trial thing right now, that we're not, no, we're not gonna punish anybody, we're not gonna issue the fines, if we don't get that out to the public, we're gonna cause anguish more and more, we're gonna get mail, mail, mail. I would think that we should announce it and ask the POA to send a note out to all the owners.
The POA will send it, we don't have to ask them, right? They'll send it out, and the town can say that.
And let people know.
The current ordinance is not, that we know fines attached to the current ordinance until further notice.
Exactly.
I have no problem with that. And then we can work on it, and, and get it right, or as, as right as can be.
Yep, that's, so therefore, not even put a date, you know, in the ordinance.
Well, we already voted on the ordinance.
Well, we can vote again, but, uh,
But that's what we're trying to do, because it's not going to enforce the penalties attached to the ordinance until such a day, so it's the same as it was before we voted the ordinance in.
Well, we'd have to,
We just have to.
All we have to do is,
We'd have to change the enforcement. There is a date in the ordinance right now.
We can just,
That we just can't say, oh, we're gonna ignore it. That's not how we should do business. But, um, David, what, and, and I appreciate the, the other, the big curve ball is, when do you expect the, um, the negotiations, or however you're describing them, to be complete with, uh, Waste Industries? And while he's doing that, I'm, I'm all for, you know, it's not a perfect, so we, we can incrementally, you know, see how things work as well, right? Um, but, uh, um, I'm all for, while that's happening, we, you know, we, we shelf the, um, enforcement. And, and, and if this is right around the corner, we should probably shelf any incremental changes as well, while, you know, this potentially could happen right away.
While, while he's looking that up, Waste Industries proposed that they were gonna give us a Thursday second pickup.
Yes.
I immediately thought, why would we do that? Why would we pay for a second pickup, two days away from a regular pickup? I would say, if they can change that, then I would cancel that contract.
Well, let's have that discussion. I, I, that was my first reaction.
Yeah.
But I think, again, that's, it throws a big wrench in everything, so we should have a discussion and really,
But I'm just saying,
Play out the,
We need to think about that.
Repercussions of, of that.
And I'd wanna know, does the contract allow us to just cancel the contract if they change the pickup date? Because it's critical. Like, I could have a Friday, Saturday, that's done.
That contract doesn't specify date, time, certain. It's a weekly pickup. You gotta remember, one of them, there's a contract with Brunswick County, and there's a contract with us. Beyond that, we need to consult with the attorney.
How about our contract, that we have a separate one, right?
There's a contract with accounting, there's a contract with the county, and a contract, there's a contract between Waste Industries and the county, and a contract between the town and Waste Industries.
The days, the Waste Industries and the county is what day?
Neither, neither contract has date, time specific.
They can pick it up anytime they want to.
Ours is the second pickup.
Ours is the second.
Ours is currently the Saturday.
And, and just to, just kinda put it out there, there, there are no alternatives to Waste Industries? Okay, but for us.
I'm sorry, we were, we were discussing, we're, I was just pointing out that the problem with, are there alternatives to Waste Industries is, the county pays for the one day a week, so it's kinda like, unless the county would change, we don't have an alternative. And a complication on Waste Industries for the second one is, it's their, it's their bins. So I would think that that's sort of, again, just hypothesize, it's a complication if you don't wanna use them for the second pickup, but you got their bins.
Right.
Um, none of this is straightforward.
Never is.
The email from Waste Industries that they called timeout on is very non-committal. They, they basically call the timeout, and they'll get back to us.
But I will say, one thing I learned from the Waste Industries sudden, where we might change things, was going, okay. Trying to set any specific number of hours is tricky. If you now consider that at any point in time, Waste Industries could change something. Because the contracts are not under our, that contract is not under our control, really. The, the weekly pickup, because that is the county, and we're sort of part of an unclear contract. So, yes.
So to, so to, so to try to wrap this up, let me try to put it in perspective. So we've got, we've got a timeout for Waste Industries, we could get a timeout for proposed changes, but we also, I think, are in agreement, maybe, I'm just testing the water, that we, we, um, change the current ordinance penalty date to say,
Until further.
Until further notice, or?
Until further notice.
However legally.
So, so can we direct the staff to do that, to be presented to us on the next?
Nineteenth.
On the nineteenth.
On the nineteenth, for a discussion of possible action.
And we'd, we'd have to have the staff in conjunction with Noel.
Right.
So that we do it right.
Yeah, the staff knows, that's how they do business, I hope.
Is, is, is rollback included in this, or not?
Rollback is not in the ordinance. Rollback is an agreed town service that we voted on, that we instructed the town manager to get bids on, and they've already had the pre-bid meeting, and bids should be coming in sometime this month.
They're due the twelfth at noon.
Thank you, thank you for your education, educating me again on that. But I'm, I'm a little insistent here, that we have people that are on the edge of the, they're, they're teetering, even though they're not gonna be, even though they're, we're not gonna find the people and everything else. But the other part of the equation here is, are we gonna provide rollback to these folks?
That's an issue that,
No, rollback.
No, we are, we are providing rollback.
Yeah, that's what I wanna hear, that's what I wanna hear.
Yeah, rollback is,
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I thought you were, we all get confused sometimes and say rollback instead of rollout, and rollout instead of rollback. So, rollback. Yes.
Okay, good.
So are we in agreement with those two things? Timeout for any changes?
Well, actually, I think the agreement would be, there will be no changes to the ordinance, except for the enforcement component.
And then the only changes, yeah, the, the enforcement, correct.
And, and that enforcement component is defined as a date.
Yes.
Okay, and, and it will be,
We don't want a date.
It will be either deleted or worded in such a fashion,
Until,
Until,
Yeah, I think we need to know so, if that's, if that's legal.
You know, one of the, my final comment today is gonna be, one of the issues, and I think the bigger issue for trash for us, is rentals. I mean, and I was, I rented, I sat there, that's a major issue. One of the things that we get here is, every time I have a healthcare appointment, I get a text message and a, and a email telling me the day before, or the day of, and to confirm, reminder, this is gonna happen, you need to be here. The VA sent me one yesterday, you've got one on Monday, so you're gonna be there? If the rental agencies who control most of the rentals had that sort of a service, that they have an email, or, or a phone, or a cellphone to send a message, and they did that on Friday night for the Saturday pickup, you would probably significantly increase the number of renters who would put their cans out. If you told, take them out now, if you wanna walk some more garbage tomorrow morning, that's fine, but take them out now, take them out, you have to do it Friday night, that's part of the game. I think that would increase significantly. It would have with my neighbors that were renting at the time, and it's, I don't know how expensive it is, or if it's even been considered by the rental agencies, but getting that word at the last minute, by the way, get those cans out, this is really important.
I, I understood, I understood last year, there was one rental management company that did do something the, at, like on a Friday afternoon, to try to get a message to everybody, that, hey, get your bins out before you go to bed. I ca, I don't remember which one, but I assume it helped.
Can, can I, uh, come back to the enforcement date?
Yeah.
And, and something dawns on me that, I, I said, a deletion of an enforcement date. We can't delete an enforcement date, because that means it's ineffective.
No, we have to put it,
So, so what we will have to qualify is the way to word the deferment of enforcement. Okay, so I just wanna make sure that, so when we coordinate with Noel, we've adequately captured that. But I understand what the board intends to do is,
No, good catch.
Timeout on this, we, okay.
Good catch.
But that still, um, I'm assuming that we're still gonna meet with the two commissioners to discuss some of the enforcement issues in the intervening timeframe. Okay.
That's next Tuesday, Tuesday morning, next Tuesday, the twelfth.
Okay, are we, are we good? Mr. Mayor?
Um, if I could just, okay, that was, the, the enforcement date was one thing, what was the second? There were two aspects of it.
The other one was,
That, that's just the enforcement date, okay, all right. So that's the only action assigned to the staff is to work on the date of the, okay.
Is it, is easier to change enforcement date, or simply say we don't issue penalties?
She's, he's gonna discuss that with the attorney.
I, I have a real problem with having any kind of ordinance on the books with the intent of not enforcing. I think it just confuses the whole thing.
This could be a very specific enforcement portion. Again, is, and again, John and I will be meeting to talk through, but if there are things in there, such as yard waste, such as other aspects, that, like, the extra bags that are heaped on the side of the road, which definitely is something we wanna enforce, there are ways of having certain specific sections enforced, and others where enforcement will be delayed pending further, it could be pending a year of warnings, or pending a year of seeing how things are going. But it's not that everything in the ordinance is considered not open for enforcement. Yeah, that's what, that's what we should be discussing.
So, and, and that's a good point, Mr. Mayor, I, I agree. So maybe we should just put a, you know, change it from nineteen to twenty, you know, five, one, twenty. So as not to get into the non-enforceable.
Well, the attorney's gonna review anyway.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Sure.
When, when you're talking about enforcement and non-enforcement, that, Alan's absolutely right. I mean, there's a couple of things that I think the board might be missing here. When you write up ordinance, having, having the board itself dictate to the code enforcement officer how it's going to be enforced is way outside the door. Your, once you, once you designate, once that book designates someone to enforce a ordinance, it is up to that code enforcement person's interpretation of what that is. And unless you specifically put it in there, how you want it done and not done, then not only is it their responsibility, they hold the responsibility for whether they do it right, or when they do it, or how they do it. And I, I've not, I don't know of anywhere where, where commissioners will determine how the, the, the staff is gonna go about making those interpretations and doing those enforcements. That is a, that's a, that's a fine line, that's one.
But let me, let me jump on board with Tim. Tim is exactly right, because it goes through the warranting of, of that enforcement officer's authority, and also does public trust, the public duty doctrine.
And there's also, there's also, code enforcement officers are not exempt, actually, talk to your attorney. The code enforcement officers are not covered under the public trust laws. Building officials are not covered under the public trust laws. These guys are, firemen are, but we're not. So whenever you give us a job to do and tell us to go do it, your input can, has the, has, has, has the possibility of creating a lot of problems. Now, number one problem it creates is it puts you in liability. Because the laws that allow us to go out there and do it, you aren't covered under. So writing ordinances and then establishing a protocol, maybe okay, or a policy to do that, but having input in it is, is off the base. The other thing is, is I was talking about the deadline and the non-deadline. Let me warn you that, that whatever department you decide to put this in, the months that you're talking about putting it in are the busiest months of the year. The months that you're talking about enforcing this become the busiest part of the year. They've been the busiest part of the year for rental companies, the busiest part of the year for, for some of the staff at some of our departments. It's the weather's pretty, people can work, things are getting done, so there's, you gotta keep that in mind as well. But I'm, I'm, I'm concerned that an ordinance, as, as the person that we're talking about enforcing it, or as, I, I, the whole ordinance, the whole boundary of how it came about and how it was done concerns me. Most ordinances are ideas that are passed out to the staff, and staff then develops an ordinance, and it goes back up. And so staff itself, the enforcement agency or the departments involved handle that. I've carried many text amendments to y'all themselves, ourselves, and I think they've worked out wonderfully. I don't know if you've had any, you know, and you asked my opinion on those of how we're going to enforce it, when those, those are brought to you. This has been developed at, at the commissioners level, you know, behind the dyes, so to speak, and then presented out there. And that's fine, I, I don't know that there's anything wrong with that, and but I'm just saying that's not the typical way an ordinance is developed. It's not developed on the backside of, of staff. And, for instance, we want all these things to go through committees, we want all these things to be gone through the, through, through the planning department, but yet this somehow managed to be on the other side. And I think that's some of the issues with it.
You know, again, there was staff, there was the town attorney, there was myself as the representative of the Board of Commissioners that worked on the ordinance. This was not done without staff at the table. The staff that was at the table, for whatever reason that you were not part of that staff, I don't know, but we had staff at the table to go through it. And there was discussion about, yes, there will be an enforcement component, everybody understands that, again. Commissioner Fletcher and I, it's not our intent to go and sit with town staff again, and go through, this is how we and go through, this is how we wanna see it. It's the, these are the areas, these are, what are thoughts? How could this happen? Yes, we do know and we've acknowledged all along, in the end, it is up to the town manager and staff to decide how something is going to be enforced. It doesn't mean we can't sit and talk through it. And particularly since we've acknowledged that this may have budget ramifications because we may not have manpower. So we're not trying to circumvent anything, we're not trying to impose anything. We're trying to be part of a process that is very complicated and that we have to answer to citizens too, just like you do. And so we're trying, again, to work this along in the best way possible for us to understand everything the best we can. So I, again, look to the town manager when we're talking with staff to say what staff should be someplace so that we can have a talk. This is not about dictating or going outside our remit, Tim. This is trying to be, it's trying to be involved.
I've never said that she stepped outside her bounds, I've never said she's trying to dictate. I just said it gets out of the norm, or how that process works. I don't, yeah, I, I, I'm not trying to be the evil person here.
I, I, I'm not accused, it's, well, the, the norm, that sometimes the norm changes. It's not sometimes, it's better when the norm is stretched a bit. Unless the norm is specifically dictated by law, then it has to be. Commissioner understanding an input, I don't think is a problem. But in the end, it's not gonna be our decision how to legally enforce something.
I, I do think we might take a learning away from this. We shouldn't be passing ordinances that we don't intend to enforce.
We know that.
Bottom line. We shouldn't have any on the books, and we've already talked about, if we've got ordinances that we don't intend to enforce, then get rid of them. Get them off the books. There's, there's no point in having something, telling the police department, by the way, we're raising the, the speed limit to seventy-five, but don't worry about it, don't enforce it. He can't do that. He got a job, if we got an ordinance, he's gotta do that.
I, I don't think that anybody passed this not expecting to enforce it, right? We, we've gone forward.
We already talked about, we're gonna delay the enforcement, so we're not enforcing it.
But that, that was an accommodation, and really, think about it. We did that so people would have an opportunity to get accustomed to the new ordinance, right? I don't know how else you can do that.
Do a draft, do a draft and tell them, we're planning to do this, so start doing it now, as an advisory thing. But when we pass the ordinance, we should implement it, but.
Well, you know, it brings back the point. How did we communicate this change, too? I mean, we should, to your point, we shouldn't press an ordinance to communicate a change. We should do, communicate a change intention, intent some other way.
At draft level.
Again, I have no, no quibble with the idea that the people should know as much as possible. But again, we had nine different, eight or nine different meetings where we discussed this. We had agenda packets go out. How else, and if you put it on the town website, you'd only reach the same people, right? So I mean, I think, we'll go back to the other one. It's incumbent upon the people to read, they have, they have an opportunity to, to listen to the minutes, they have an opportunity to read the minutes, they have an opportunity to look at the agenda packet. The Property Owners Association or the Homeowners Association sends out a, a report every month. Lose View sends out a report every month. People can become educated on what we're doing here. And I don't know what else, how much more.
Well, we need to talk about it because it's on our, on our plan. But why do, why do people react when it's an ordinance? Why don't we establish something different where they can have, react when we, a, a, a different way, when, before we codify it? That's, that's what we should be talking about in,
So we should, but I just,
Communications plan.
The suggestion should be that we have on every time we're gonna do an, and I'm not, again, quibbling, just putting this out. Every time we're going to address an ordinance, we should have a public meeting, announce a public meeting specifically to, to have public comment on that proposed ordinance change.
I'm making no suggestions, all I'm saying is we need to do it differently than we're doing it.
It was an objective.
It's an objective to talk about some of our options.
We're getting into a monique gray area of point of order.
Correct.
Yep, yep.
And we're not, we don't have that topic on the agenda. I know somebody wants to correct me, but I think I'm right.
If, if we're satisfied with giving the town manager the action that we want to see,
I am.
Then I would move that we adjourn.
And I would second that motion.
Yep, I second it.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.